First of all, I want to recognize, I think we have in excess of 100 people tonight. And so the first thing I want to say is, I'm sorry, I think we had some limitations, some capacity limitations last time, and we've learned from that, we've changed our license, and I think we can accommodate 1,000 now. That has also led to our ability to make some changes to the way comments are offered. And I'll talk about that a little bit more when we get to that part of the evening. So also, I think of note, if you are all looking at the agenda, you see item three is the action items, and item four is public participation. And we would like to change that position so that we hear public participation before we take action. So I hope that makes sense. So first on the agenda tonight is a series of discussion reports.
Are you turning that to me?
I am, Bob. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take it away.
So just so everybody has kind of an idea of where we're headed tonight and what we're going to talk about. To start with, because there's a number of people that are in this meeting tonight that were not here two weeks ago for the regular board meeting, we're going to review a lot of the information that was shared on January 13th. After that review, then we will add to that information, information that has come to us since January 13th. Then we're going to talk about where we are in the Portland metro area with vaccines for educators. We're going to talk about a report that came out of Oregon Health Sciences University about the possibility of a surge in the virus. Then we're going to spend some time talking about a couple of models of what a hybrid school could possibly look like at the elementary level. And we'll walk through, there'll be some photos that would show a classroom setup, how kids might enter a school building. And at this time, we are still under discussions with our teachers at those grade levels to make the decision as to which direction to go. So Natalie, do I have access to the share screen?
Hey, Bob. Bob, if I could interrupt for just a moment?
Sure.
My interest to board that appears that we have some folks stuck in a waiting room. We have 75 participants in the in the attendee side that's growing. And it appears that the people who texted me are now in the meeting. So sorry, I'm sorry about that interruption.
Okay, do we have, do we have everybody in now, Jeremiah?
I can't see the waiting room, but I can see that it's growing, so that's a good sign.
Okay, so why don't we just wait another minute or so?
Yeah, please.
I want to make sure that everybody that would like to be into this board meeting has the opportunity to get here and to hear the information and make sure that they can understand everything that we're looking at.
I noticed, oh, there it goes. I notice the participants are now at 90, and oh, it's now climbing. That's great. I was wondering about that too, because you said over 100, yet we weren't seeing that. It's still growing, Bob.
Okay. I'm going to stop share here for a minute so that I can watch it grow too.
And for those of you still coming in, we changed our Zoom license so that we can accommodate up to 1,000. This is the first time we're doing that and seeing the numbers come in. So thanks for your patience. We would rather get it right. And we did have, as a board, a discussion about making sure we don't repeat that mistake going forward.
It does seem like it's stabilized.
Okay. I'll go back to share my screen. So this presentation was made first to the board two weeks ago, and a number of you in the audience have seen it, and it's been updated as of today. So most recent updates we can give you. So just as a reminder of where we have been, so the history of COVID in Oregon, it's hard to imagine that it's only 11 months old. It seems like certainly from my position that we've been living with this for a very, very, very long time. And it's a daily discussion in our school district as to what's happened and where things are going. But the first case was discovered on February 28th, 2020. Second case, the next two days later, on March 1st, 2020. The, there were four cases discovered on March 7th and 8th, on March 8th. The first death occurred on March 14th. On March, or January 12th, there were 1,200 cases. So that was the day before our last board meeting, then 54 deaths. The next day, the day of our board meeting, there were 1,346 cases and 41 deaths. The data is not out yet today for Oregon, but yesterday it was 796 cases and 22 deaths. I think of a special note is that yesterday, a 27-year-old woman in Hood River County passed away with no underlying conditions with the report was. And today, there's a report of a 32-year-old man in Portland who passed away from COVID. The executive orders that have taken place, executive order number 20-8 is the one that's most often referred to by school district folks, because that was the first major executive order issued by Governor Brown that stipulated not in-person school. You probably remember that we started with just a two-week break in school from March, I believe it was the 17th to April 1st. By the time we got close to April 1st, that had been expanded to April 28th. And before we got to April 28th, that was expanded to the remainder of the school year. Second executive order was April 23rd, and that was the extension to the rest of the year. On June 24th, the executive order about in-person hybrid learning was developed at that point in our school district. We were all pointing towards the possibility that we'd be open in a hybrid learning environment beginning in September. The metrics started to come into play in late July. The first mandatory metrics were established by Oregon Health Authority. And it was a previous seven days count. So from whatever the data was on that day, in the previous seven days, was the number of cases within a county in those seven days divided by seven equal the number of, I'm sorry, divided by four, because in Clackamas County, there's roughly 420,000 people, so it's divided by 4.2. And if the number was less than 30 per 100,000, then it was suitable for opening K through five. If the numbers were less than 10 per 100,000, then we could open six through 12. We'll talk in a minute about what the numbers have done. On October 30th, that was revised. And it became a previous 14-day count instead of seven. And you can see that it changed from under 30 in seven days to under 100 in 14 days. So if we're doing a comparison between then and now, or then, then on July 28th to October 30th, it would be like saying it was 60 on July 28th, if it was a 14-day count. So it changed quite a bit, but not as much as it might appear initially. And for six through 12, those numbers were 50 per 100,000. And those are county numbers, not statewide numbers. On December 23rd, the governor announced that the metrics were no longer mandatory, that they would become advisory. That was a surprise to us on that date. We heard that might be coming, but we were surprised that it was that date when they were released. On January 19th, this says, new guidelines and metrics expected from ODE. So on January 13th, when we presented this to the board, we were anticipation of that meeting on January 19th. And I'll review the new metrics a little bit later on in this presentation. The state guidelines. So we received guidelines from the state about how to operate schools during COVID. The first version of those guidelines came out on June 10th. It was 47 pages long, version 1.00. On June 30th, we received the second version, 1.5.8 was the indexing number on it, and it was 56 pages long. Of note with these pages and the length of those is that's just the number of pages within the actual guidelines. Within the guidelines, there's multiple links that take you to other information that gives greater explanation of each of the guidelines that are listed. On July 22nd, version 2.7.2 was issued. That was 69 pages long. July 29th, version 3.1.0, 75 pages. August 11th, 2020, version 3.7.4, 87 pages. Each of these versions had modifications to the guidelines or new additions to the guidelines. And so each time, we had to pivot to respond to the guidelines that were in place at that time. On September 8th, version 3.7.8, 85 pages. Version 4.0 on October 30th. Version 4.1 on December 4th. Version 5.1, December 31st. And then the most recent guidelines that we received on January 19th was 5.5.0 is the indexing number, and it was 91 pages long. If you think this is complicated to understand, you are correct. There is, there are so many revisions that at times, it's difficult to remember whether that was the December 4th guideline, or was that the January 19th guideline? The current metrics for Clackamas County. So on December 28th, the metrics for Clackamas County were 344 per 100,000. January 4th, 318. January 11th, 348. January 18th, 309. And the metrics that came out two days ago were 226 per 100,000. So you'll know more about what this means when we talk a little bit about the new metrics for the state of Oregon. But keep in mind that the key number is 350. And you'll notice that all of these numbers are below 350. The second key number is 200. And we're well above 200 with each of these numbers. Although I project that next Monday, the metrics that come out, that they will fall below 200. But maybe just barely, and it looks like the uptick has started as it relates to COVID infections in our state. One of the issues the board has to struggle with is liability protection. In late June, we were notified that COVID-19 had been excluded from liability protection for school districts in the state of Oregon. Almost all school districts purchased their liability insurance from the Oregon School Board Association, who has the capability of marketing it on a statewide basis as opposed to district-by-district basis, which is better for pricing. But insurance policies began excluding liability protection for COVID-specific lawsuits. In October, on August, we had our insurance agent meet with the school board and explain to the board what that means and what risk they could potentially assume if they were to operate school outside of any of the protocols or guidelines by the state. And, and we had a case that resulted in a COVID lawsuit. On December 21st, 2020, in a special one-day session of the Oregon Legislature, the legislature passed liability protection. And that protection held if all guidelines were followed by a school district. So that was an important piece of legislation and provided a lot of hope for all of us. However, two weeks later, the Oregon School Board Association confirmed through their legal counsel that the metrics that we'll talk about in a minute were part of that whole formula for determining whether we had followed all of the guidelines as issued by the state. So while the state has made them advisory, for liability protection, advisory doesn't matter. On January 12th, we were informed that there could possibly be a remedy in the works for that problem through the Oregon Legislature. To date, I have no updates as to whether there has been any progress on trimming up with a remedy to the liability problem for school districts.
Hey, Bob, can I interrupt?
Yeah.
You stated that we needed to follow the state guidelines for liability protection. But as far as I understand, it's also ODE and the OSHA guidelines?
Yeah, that's all part of the state guidelines. So whether it's OSHA, or whether it's ODE, it doesn't matter, Oregon Health Association, OHA, all of those different guidelines matter. And so, so we have to know the guidelines for all the different agencies on how to operate schools and what are considered as the safety protocols for that. Yeah, thank you, Eric.
And Bob, can you back up one slide? So this is just kind of a clarification question. I feel like the board is familiar with liability and how that works for us. Can you think of a scenario that would help explain to people who might be watching for the first time?
If, so a scenario would be if someone contracted the COVID virus, and it was proven that that was at school, and it was proven that the school had negligently operated school without regard for the guidelines and protocols, then we would be potentially liable. Obviously, those get into a lot of definitions when you get into trial. It's all, it also should be noted that when we say no liability protection, that also includes legal costs. So if we're sued, we assume the cost of that. Although there is a minor remedy for that through the Oregon School Board Association, it probably gets into too much detail to explain in this meeting. But the, what we, what we know about lawsuits, because we were involved in one with a few years ago, is that if it winds up in the federal court, it's very easily to have at least a quarter million dollars of legal fees and still win the case. And so it's, it is a big deal for school districts and something that school boards should very carefully consider when they're making their decisions. Did that, anything else you wanted on there, Greg?
Um, I just, maybe, did I, I don't know if it was our insurance person, and maybe I, maybe I made this up. I don't think so. Just something that, for example, if a student brought COVID home and someone in the home required services, and perhaps they didn't have adequate coverage, or their insurance company just sought a way to pay for it. Is that the kind of liability, like, is that the kind of situation we're talking about as a possibility?
It could be, it could be the expenses of medical bills. It could be penalties related to a liability case. So there's a variety of things that could amount to several thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you. And I just, I did want the community to hear a little more and understand what we meant when we were talking about liability. So thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Vaccine. On December 11th, Pfizer announced that their vaccine had been approved by the FDA. On December 14th, the first vaccines were administered in the state of Oregon. On December 18th, Moderna vaccine was approved by the FDA. And on January 12th, Governor Brown stated that the COVID vaccine would be available for educators beginning on January 23rd. That date changed to the 25th, but the same, the same information. And I have quite a bit more information, just a little bit about the vaccine. I've been pretty immersed in that. Decisions to be made by the school board. You will need to decide how the metrics will factor into school opening. So we'll give you some information about those metrics. You'll need to think about the availability of the vaccine and what it means, and how does that factor into school opening? Decisions to be made by the administration in collaboration with teachers, support staff, and parents. One is how to address all the safety protocols. What I will tell you is that we've been working on this for months. And we have all of the safety protocols that we are aware of have been assigned to different people in the school district to follow up with and create the protocols that fall underneath that particular thing. In some cases, that list is, the last time I counted, it was around 70 items long. But underneath, underneath each of those items are bullets of different things that have to be completed underneath there. We will conduct a survey of parents in the next few weeks. We will need to know parents' views as far as if they would return to school if they were open, if they need to stay in CDL. Our plan is that if we do open schools, we would still offer CDL for all of our students, because we know that there are a number of parents that are not comfortable with sending their kids back to school. We need to achieve the agreements with our employee groups for the opening of it. The, our employee groups have exercised their legal right, which is to demand, demand the bargaining, demand to bargain the reopening of our schools. And we've been, we've attempted to work this entire problem hand-in-hand with our employees to make sure that we come up with the best model that most people would be comfortable with. And then we need to determine, and we're close to the final determination of that, as to what type of hybrid model we would have, what, what it looks like for limited in-person instruction that's known in the, in the education world as Lippi, L-I-P-I, and what grade levels, if we open, what grade levels would be open for. We'll discuss all of that a little bit later. Our challenge is going forward. The modeling shows an anticipated surge in February, March. That's actually been moved back to March and April now. The COVID variant, at the time that we did this discussion on the 13th, it was believed that the variant would be in Oregon before long. Now, we've had three cases of the variant that have been identified with the most recent one on January 24th. Right now, we don't know what we don't know. We don't know what's going to be around the next corner as related to the virus. And a significant thing that we need to overcome is our fear. And the fear is real. And we need to be able to overcome fear in order to be able to successfully open our schools. So long-term modeling, this was the model that was presented to us on the 19th by the analysts from the Oregon Health Sciences University. And had, had we, had I had the graph that we presented, and when we talked about this on January 13th, the dark line would have been much higher. At that time, they were projecting that the the surge that would happen in the springtime would be perhaps two or three times greater than the surge that occurred after Thanksgiving. You can see that we're still on the downward spiral for where they think this is, this will go. And, but there should, there could be a surge that follows. What was interesting about the research and what they, what they demonstrated is that the behaviors of people are what drive this. And that one of the behaviors that really drives it is the fatigue from the pandemic. And when things open, the people rush to whatever has opened, whether it's restaurants or gyms or whatever. And accompanying that, they start to see a surge. And so we know things will reopen before long. And the surge is projected now to perhaps peak in early April. But again, we don't know that. And so this is something we just keep an eye on every day. Another thing that happened since, since then is this new metric formula came out. And so, and the metrics that we were in prior to this formula, we would have seen that for opening elementary schools, the infection rate would need to be below 100 per 100,000. In this, you can see that through the, through the science that they have studied throughout the United States and throughout the world, they're, they're concluding, and by there, I mean the Oregon Health Authority and the Center for Disease Control have concluded that the study done by Harvard University is kind of the gold standard now. And that infection rate in the county of up to 350 would allow us to open in a hybrid format for our youngest children, for the elementary school children. The next column over, onsite and hybrid, would indicate that it would be safe to open schools if the infection rate was below 200. And that fully open school without a hybrid model could occur if the numbers fall below 50. So that's the, that's the new metrics. And that's, that's the new standard in the state of Oregon. Again, these are advisory. They are not mandatory. No school district has to operate through school district based on these metrics. They are simply advisory. But they are advisory based on the best research that our state leaders can, can access that says this is the way it should go.
Bob, could you go back to the graph right before that for just a second? I had a question really quick, and my eyes are bad, so I can't really, the bottom are dates, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And the black, you said it's modeled history. Are they taking into account in that, you were talking about opening, are they taking into account that surge with the potential of March K2 throughout the state opening? Or is this just as is right now as everything else is, or can you even answer that?
It would be taken into consideration that restaurants will open eventually.
But not, this doesn't have
Will open, but not necessarily the schools are opening during that time.
Okay, so they're just looking at like restaurants, gyms?
Yeah, as far as I know, they did not express that this, this concluded that schools were opening as part of this modeling.
Okay, thank you.
Next is vaccinations for educators. Governor Brown held a press conference on January 22nd and reinforced that vaccinating educators is a priority. It's a very contentious issue, because we have a lot of people in the state that are medically fragile. And to move educators in front of that group is contentious. There are still 64,000 people in the metropolitan area, which includes the three counties, Washington, Multnomah, and Clackamas County, that fall in classification 1A as healthcare workers that have not been vaccinated yet. The availability of the vaccine is the issue. If you were in the meeting on January 13th, you, you heard Greg and I talk about a meeting that we had just been in with healthcare officials and school superintendents talking about the aspirations of rolling forward with a major event in the metropolitan area that could, that could vaccinate up to 50,000 people over one weekend. And during the course of that 45-minute meeting, the date of the meeting changed because they found out that the vaccine would not come into the state at the rate that they thought it would. And by the next day, that plan was no longer in place, because it was announced that there was no back, no additional vaccine to send to states. And so then by Friday, the 22nd, the governor held a press conference to announce kind of the next thing with educators being vaccinated as a priority. Priority is to get schools open. And the priority in the metropolitan area, we have attempted to organize ourselves in a manner that allows for us to most efficiently move through this process of vaccination. So we've set priorities across all school districts that we've agreed to that begins with vaccinating our youngest children. Not our youngest children, our youngest adults that work with the youngest children and working our way up to the oldest children. What, what has occurred is wave one of the vaccination started today. And that has allowed K-1 teachers, people that are in the operations into a school district, so that's the cooks, the custodians, the bus drivers, that those people would be considered as high priority to be vaccinated. Those that teach and limited in-person instruction and childcare providers throughout the region. Interestingly enough, there's 21,000 people in that category within the three-county area of people that provide childcare. And it's, it's part of the essential plan by the governor to, to make sure we can get businesses back open and functioning. Wave two will start as soon as wave one is done. And I'll talk just a little bit about what's happened here in just a minute. But that's, that moves it up some grade levels. So this is people that work with second through fifth grade. Wave three, the middle school staff will be vaccinated. Wave four, high school staff. So it was announced on Tuesday that at noon, provided a link for employees, school employees in the metro area who've fit, who fit into the classification of teaching young children. So it also includes preschool teachers within this category. Who've fit, who, who fit into the classification of teaching young children. So it also includes preschool teachers within this category. And that was released that, that they could access an, an online scheduling program beginning at noon yesterday. By 12:30, we found out that that scheduling program wasn't working. Fortunately, it was a quick remedy and by one o'clock, the scheduling program was functioning again. By 1:55, the 12,000 slots that were available for the first week. The first week started today and it runs through next Tuesday. Of the, of the 12,000 slots, about 55% had already been scheduled. By seven o'clock, 100% of the scheduling times had been filled. At 4:30 today, an additional week was opened up that has nearly 15,000 slots for. Scheduling and we were getting reports immediately of. People that had already signed up and had made their way into the second scheduling. We've had a lot of Gladstone staff that scheduled in, in this first wave and some received their vaccines today. So it's, it's projected. That the, everyone in the education world. In the metro area will have received their first dose by the end of February or early March. At the time when they receive first dose, they are scheduled for second dose. And depending on which product it is, Moderna or Pfizer, there's different waiting periods with each of those between first dose and second dose. And then there's a, a few days, a couple of weeks in general, after the second dose and full immunity is reached. So that's, that's where we are. And so those people that were vaccinated today would likely receive their second dose somewhere from. Mid-February to the end of February. And their full immunity before spring break.
Hey Bob, quick question, sorry to interrupt. The OHS document did talk about that there was 152,000 educator support staff. To be vaccinated and from what I read, 85,000 vaccines, not vials. Because from what I understand, each vial has about five doses. So correct me if I'm wrong, but that was for the next three weeks. Is that still the metric?
Well, I, I can't speak to the statewide metric. I can speak to the metro area. We estimate there are 40,000 educators and, and the estimate's pretty solid because every school district. Did their own inventory of how many it would take for the district and it includes substitute teachers. So it would, it's, we're trying to look at the full gamut of who has to be vaccinated and for, for schools to work. There's about 21,000 childcare providers within the three-county area. There's, we believe there's about 4,500 private school educators that are also eligible for this vaccine. And then there's smaller numbers in, in a couple of other categories. But if everyone chose to get the vaccine. We think that it's somewhere between 65 and 70,000 people in the metro area. But no one has the official count of what that is. We just, we just have a pretty good idea of what it is. I had the opportunity to go down on Monday and, and see the Oregon Convention Center and how it was set up and how it was organized. And it's absolutely, it's a well-thought-out plan. And for the most part, people get through in less than an hour unless they choose to go around the noon hour and then it can take up to two hours. If they choose to go around the noon hour. So we're gonna, we're gonna shift here to a hybrid in just a minute. Do, do you know the rest of you have any questions about what you've seen so far? Okay Jeremiah, I think we're ready for you to bring in your slide. I'll stop this one. So Jeremiah Patterson, our assistant superintendent will review the different hybrid models that we're looking at and there's two that he'll present tonight. Just to give you, this is to give you an idea of what a hybrid program might look like. What it might entail as far as what a school day looks like. But I will tell you, it's not regular school. It's not regular school. Fewer kids in the building and less time in the building. So Jeremiah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So I, I am going to share about our plans underway to prepare for return to school. Called a hybrid model and be reviewing for you what that means. That Bob took the, took the punchline there that this, this will look and feel very different. From what we conceive of school, if you've been a, you've been volunteering in the classroom or been in your child's classroom. I've selected a few images to share with you that I believe will illustrate some of the key differences that we're dealing with. And it put constraints or governors on the, on the planning process. I won't get extremely, extremely specific about models, about exact modeling. Except that to, to answer questions, I can, I can get into whatever level of detail the board would like. But I think that these first couple of images will, will be telling, there are other requirements of operating in a hybrid model that are. Less visually obvious, obvious, like sanitation protocols and air balancing, exchange of airflow. But these, these first few image, images should give initial understanding of the changes before us. This first image shows a row of chairs representing students, took this this morning. Thank you, Sarah Duncan, for helping me out. In a line in the hall, Gladstone Center for Children and Families. And it's, as everyone probably knows, we often transition using the hallways between classroom spaces and play spaces, cafeterias, restrooms. Typically, that's a full classroom, a typical class size in Gladstone is around 24 to 28 students at the elementary level. Right now, because of the, the number of students at. Kindergarten and first grade, whose families have chosen to be in our online-only program. That leaves about a ratio of about 20 to one in our current CDL. So this image shows how, what half of that would look like. And the student number one is standing just outside of room number one at the center and student number 10. 60 feet away is standing just past the doorway to room number three. So we've, we've exceeded, we've passed two, two full classrooms who were into the third. This were a line of students making a transition to somewhere else in the building. So this obviously causes us to think differently about how and why we would move throughout the building. On a typical morning at GCCF, kindergartners mix and mingle in the building entry and then they go sit down to eat breakfast in the cafeteria and it's a. It's a very fun place to be, as is, as is the lunch hour. I, I enjoy very much walking around and opening go-burts. And talking with, talking with young kiddos. So imagine, it's gonna take you on a little exercise here, that instead of that congregation in the cafeteria. Relatively free for all, but controlled. Imagine instead that they line up outside in the end zone of the football field. And then enter the exterior doors of the five currently operating kindergarten classrooms. After, after going through a screening process. John Wetton, of course, even more complex because of the number of students, but also because of the number of entrances. And while, while a small portion of the classrooms, especially first and second grade classrooms. Open up, have a, have their own individual egress to the outside. Most of the, most of them do not and instead open up onto a long corridor, much longer than the one you're looking at here. With up to 15 classrooms on a corridor. So we need to plan with great detail what the traffic flow through the building looks like. Including assigned restrooms, restroom protocols and how we, how we operate and monitor those comings and goings. This is a fourth grade classroom. And aside from some details on the walls, to my eyes, it does not look like a fourth grade classroom. The joy is still up on the walls and I, I, in particular, enjoy the way this teacher with great care. Set up a, a learning environment that's welcoming and inviting. And this was, she set this up for her students last year who are now in fifth grade because we had to leave, we had to leave our classrooms in early March of last year. So this picture was taken last week. Most of the classrooms that John Wetton looked approximately like this. enormous amount of furniture, including extra tables, carpets, approximately 50% of the student desks and chairs have been relocated to, to storage. And even with this, the movement within the classroom is going to be, going to need to be pretty limited as we're. We need to adhere to both six feet of social, of physical distancing as well as each student and the adult. Or adults in the classroom having 35 square feet of space to themselves. So movement within the classroom, I said, will be limited and obviously this, this is pretty Spartan. And to a, to an elementary teacher who, who thinks a lot about their, their learning space. This can be, this can be pretty jarring. So, so part of our. Exposure of, of all this is, is not only for our staff and faculty, but also for our community to see and the board to see. What it look, what it might look and feel like.
And Jeremiah, the six and 35 that are at the top, where did those numbers come from?
Those come from the Ready School Safe Learners Guidance, which, which is still the operating guidance and, and is not. That it is mandatory that we abide by that guidance.
And that, that originally came down from the Center for Disease Control. And our, and our states picked it up as part of the guidance for our own state. So when we, when we talk about protocols and guidelines, that is not optional for us. That is, that is a requirement.
Thanks. So at the same time, we know, and we, and we know that staying safe is our, our. Key priority, but we cannot forget who we are. And we have to be mindful of what's developmentally appropriate for our children. We need to live up to and lean into our mantra of culture of care. And this is an example, it's a picture we took last week of. Some, some design work at the kindergarten level whereby we might invest in a few more sets of. This or that, so that each student has their own kit, their own place to be with easily. Easily stored or cleaned materials. We need to find ways to be personal, to involve experience and play. Because social emotional learning is fundamental to what we do. And sitting in a Spartan classroom for a long period of time masked. Is, is not the end all and be all of what we're after. I'm going to share with you now just in a, a series of other considerations. By no means is this an exhaustive list. Of the kinds of things that we're working through with our. Both, both internal, internal planning, but also with our employee groups. Clearly, safety protocols is, are no small thing. Everything from hand washing to restroom cleaning needs to be taught and practiced. And this, another great example of this, perhaps as important, might be if a, if a space is to be used by two cohorts. Cohort A and cohort B either on the same day or on different days. What, what does it look like to sanitize that classroom so it's ready for the next cohort? Air balancing and exchange. So I've come to know far more than I care to about air changes per hour. That's ACH. We are attempting to achieve six air changes per hour in each of our elementary, our typical elementary spaces. And so what that equates to is that every 10 minutes, 100% of the outside air would be, would be exchanged. So we, our classrooms aren't designed, our systems are not designed for this. Though we are finding that through careful balancing and some, we've done extensive engineered testing of our spaces. That in most of our, almost all our spaces, elementary classrooms, we're able to achieve six air changes per hour. Final modeling, Bob alluded to this, that we, districts around us are, are announcing their plans for. A hybrid model called, let's say AMPM, whereby students come in the morning or the afternoon or. Maybe an AB where some students come one day, some students come another day, or some variation of those two models. And we are looking at those two models as well as variations of those two models. We need to arrive at a final modeling and we need to be able to describe it very clearly and in great detail. So that both for, so that our. Our families are able to make eyes wide open decisions about what they feel comfortable with. But also for our staff who, who will be occupying those spaces, they deserve to know the detail, they deserve the answers to the detailed questions. The detailed answer to the questions that they're asking. Transportation. Young ones on the school bus are gonna wanna bundle up. I see a, I foresee a run on jackets. We will be having the windows down whenever possible. Students will sit one to a seat. Except for in cases where members of the same household can sit in the, can, may sit in the same seat. There are an extensive number of transportation-related protocols. So each one of these has a lot of detail underneath it. I'm just kinda giving you the broad overview, really to elicit questions from the board that might. That might help illuminate for the board as well as for the community, the kinds of considerations where we are looking at. Nutrition. We know that. We know that food insecurity in Gladstone is no small factor. I see that on Mondays as I look out my, my office window and see our operations folks distributing. Weekly, weekly portions of food to families who drive through and pick up both in the mid-morning and the, and the early evening hours. And that's been going on, that's been going on for months and months and months. That won't stop. Because even while we open preschool through fifth grade in a hybrid model and so are able to access. Our students, we also have students in our online-only option, the PLP, who are in need of support. With nutrition, we will no doubt have families who choose the, to remain in the CDL option. Who qualify for that assistance and certainly while we have sixth through 12th graders not yet accessing. The school, we need to support them. So the nutrition support that's going on will continue. But in addition to that. There, there's the, the concept of, of nutrition at school. And this is a big one because if students eat at school. Then that means they're spending most of the day or all the day at school. And there'd be a period of time when they all take their masks off and eat together. And that poses safety concerns that should be obvious. And that's a, that's a paramount concern of our, of our planning. We've explored outdoor eating options. We've, we've mapped, we've mocked up every available covered place in, in our elementary school and, and the GCCF. But also considered other options like eating in the classroom or even thinking about how many students we could safely place in the cafeteria. We'll continue to consider these things. But I, I pause here just a moment longer than for the other considerations. Because I think it's, it's, it's something that's definitely front of mind as we, as we think about what a, what a school day looks like in a hybrid model. The next one is no easier. Bob alluded to the fact that, that some families just will not feel comfortable sending their students to school. And far be it from us at this point to be the judge of whether or not that, that concern is appropriate. There are all manner of considerations that families need to, to deal with in terms of the, the fragility of their family members. Or the, the age vulnerability of their family members or their students. And so it follows that if. We already have a sliver of our population that has chosen to remain in, in PLP at the elementary level. That's about 13%, about exactly 13%. We anticipate another significant sliver or a portion of our community will choose to stay in PLP. We've made some assumption, rather in CDL. We can make some assumptions about that. And we've, we've got modeling around some assumptions around it. But it follows that just as we have had, we have staff who are supporting students that are online-only option. We will need to ensure that we have staffing that. Addresses the students and families who have chosen to remain in CDL. And that will in turn require some rebalancing of classes. And that's, that's gonna be a tough one for students who naturally grow to love their teachers. And certainly it works the other way around. Becoming a part of another classroom community could be difficult. And we need to be responsible to our community and to our, our teachers in facilitating those changes. I think that's something, this is something that will definitely weigh heavily on the minds and hearts of our, our. Our educator groups who are helping us to plan for this. And I know it will be for our families too. So I, I just, I, I pause here for a moment as well because this is another major driver. And this is why we have to have our survey data incredibly accurate. Because we cannot afford to be toggling back and forth or to be, to be changing. Or to be, to be changing working conditions willing, uh, at will. We need to be very thoughtful about the way that we do that, so that we're, um, we're efficient, but we're also, uh, making sure that we're meeting the needs of our. Our students, our families and our staff.
Jeremiah.
Yes, sir.
Ask, uh, ask a question real quick. On the, um, rebalancing of. CDL and in-person learning, um, and also that the. Uh, graphic that you had of what a classroom would look like. Is this information, um, going to be included in the survey that we send out to the families? I mean, because you know, right now, as difficult and, uh, as unwanted. As, you know, distant learning is, I mean, we all wanna be back to normal. If, if I had, as a student, if I have a question from my teacher, if I don't understand something. At least right now, I can hold it up to the camera. And ask a teacher a question, say, I'm having trouble reading this part right here or understanding this math problem. If I'm one of the students that's, that's in the classroom. And correct me if I'm, if I, if I'm getting this wrong, if I'm a student that's in the classroom and I'm say in the middle. There's really no way that the teacher can come up to my desk, um, to help me out, uh. Figure out a reading word or a math problem or anything like that. Is that correct or, or am I a off base there?
You're talking about, you're talking about when, when we're physically in the classroom and.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm doing that. Plus also I asked a question, I asked several questions there. Yeah, but let's, let's, let's do the first one. Let's say when I'm in the classroom and, um, I need assistance. How does that look?
Sure. It, it, we need to maintain the distance. So we've asked that question, we've asked for clarity around that question and, uh. Much as we would like, even vaccinated, even vaccinated fully. Uh, we're, right now, we are, uh, for the foreseeable future required to maintain the distance. So can I come up? Uh, around the shoulder of a student and look over the shoulder and say, uh, give some guidance as to how they might approach a problem differently? No.
Okay.
Uh, that, that's pretty stark, but, but that, that pretty much answers the question now. That, I don't mean to say that there are not cases or situations where for safety sake or for, uh, any one of a number of, of. You know, very, very specific situations, there might be closer contact for a very short period of time. But the general answer is no.
Okay. So I mean, that's, that's clarification that, that the parents need to understand, right? Um, the, the other one is, um. Going back to the survey, is this information that we're discussing right now, like. Being able to have a one-on-one help with a teacher, is that gonna be included in the survey?
Steve, we'll, we will, uh, include.
Am I jumping ahead?
We, I'll just let you know, we will include what the board would like to have included in the survey. As long as we don't make the survey too long where it becomes too cumbersome for somebody to fill it out, then. Uh, we will try to get you the information that is important to know.
Well, I'm just, I just, the reason why I'm asking that question, I think it's very important that the, the parents have a realistic. Vision of what school's gonna look like. I mean, if we, so do you want your kids back in, in school? They're gonna, hell yeah, or heck yeah, I want my. Kids back in school. Um, but then when they find out that my student can't, can't get one-on-one help. With a teacher, maybe that might change their mind. Um, the, the last question I have and, and again, I thank you for. Giving me the time. Um. Will we be doing, uh, is one of the hybrids, uh, say if I'm doing, uh, CDL. Will that be going on live at the same time that a teacher is, uh, teaching a live class? In other words. Is that teacher gonna have to try to split their attention between the computer and live students? And that, I'll, I'll let that be my last question.
Yeah, it, it's, it's a really good question. Uh, and the answer, there are many answers to this question. Um, my personal belief is it's not reasonable, in particular at the elementary level, uh, to ask somebody to be doing two things at once. Uh, so there, there are nuances and there, there are, um, certainly there are heartstrings, uh, amongst our, our. Teachers who, who even would like to do that so that they can maintain, uh, both, both of the, both of those. Uh, groups of students and we're, we're in ongoing talks with our employee groups about that, but personally, my personal belief as an educator. Is that that's too much to ask and it's not, it's not going to be effective. It may, maybe at the high school level and with the right equipment and, and, and the right training, uh, but right now and at elementary. Uh, and with this particular setup. I don't believe so.
Jeremy, that was.
I'll just add to, to the, onto Bob's comments about the survey. Yes, Steve, I think we have to be even more articulate and even more detailed. Uh, because we, we need folks to understand what it is that they are, that they're responding to and, and, and because. Our staffing will, will be informed by that and, and that's a serious endeavor.
Steve, one, one other thing we've discussed is, uh, uh, creating a YouTube video. That, uh, people could watch at their, at their own pace. That would show a lot of the images you're seeing tonight, but maybe even in greater detail of what that would look like. Uh, down to the point of where do they enter buildings, um, uh, where would they line up? How do they exit buses? All those kinda things.
I like that idea. That, that might be very useful. Thank you.
What, what other thing Jeremiah, before we move off this slide is that, uh. A question came in today from a parent about how do I know it's safe? How do I know about the air balancing? Um, uh, tell me more about that. So, so Jeremiah, why don't you explain now what we do when we get test results? And how we make sure that those become accessible to, uh, staff and parents when they want to see it?
Sure. And I, I'm gonna give a little description of the report and I hope Brian Johnson's not on the call because he'll. Probably rolling his eyes at my, uh, my layman's, uh, my layman narration of what that, uh, looks like.
That Ryan Johnson oversees all of our facilities at our school district.
And he's far more articulate about this than I, but I, I've tagged along with him enough to, to be able to do a, uh. Passable job, I hope. So each of ours, each of our air handlers on the rooftop air handlers. Um, services a number of classrooms or a number of spaces in general, could be office spaces, hallways, classrooms. And, uh, given classroom might have three or four, um, places where, where the air, uh. Intake is located at the ceiling and another two or three where, where the. Where it exits the building and is exhausted through the, through the rooftop unit. And so what we're measuring then is a series of classrooms, imagine them in a row just for the ease of. Understanding, imagine them in a row, classroom one, two, three, four, five, and they're on the same unit. And so what we're measuring is, we're, we're looking at, uh, the balance of, uh. Uh, air changes per hour, but also air pressure amongst each of those classrooms. And as you go through, perhaps you start a classroom one. Uh, you see that there's some imbalance and so you start to, start to create balance by adjusting. Uh, by adjusting the settings. Then you move on to classroom two, you move on to classroom three, and each time it gets better, you've worked on the. You've worked on the down river, uh, pieces first or the up river pieces first and you're working down river. Um, so that then you're achieving by the end of the report. You are, you know that you've got, uh, balanced airflow across that set of, let's say, five or six classrooms. Then we get a series of results, uh, measuring things like relative humidity, uh, certainly temperature. Uh, but both of those things are very variable, uh, depending on the weather outside. These systems are not designed to do what we're asking them to do. They're, they're not designed for, to maximize air changes per hour. Um, but we're asking them to do that. And so then we are able to measure how many air changes per hour we are, uh, achieving. And then we're, this is a, this is a certified report. So it is, it is available to the public upon request and certainly it's been shared with both of our employee groups. Uh, every detail, uh, of those reports has been shared with them and, um, heck, I've got. I've got some maps on my floor that will be marked up with, uh, each of the, each of the air changes per hour per individual space. So that we're able to talk about it, um, intelligently, not just in general, but, uh, by a specific classroom or office space.
So for parents, what they would see. Uh, is what we have done in the past, um, if it's radon testing or it's, um, testing for lead and water. Uh, or mold, um, and air quality around mold. Uh, we, we receive, uh, technical reports on those. Um, and we also see summaries of those. And what we attempt to do is to always have whatever level of detail, uh, you would like to see available to you. Uh, either on our webpage, um, or in notebooks, um, but in some manner that, uh, that, that information is very transparent.
Stacy, I think you had a question.
I did, but I know Stacy had one too, so I didn't wanna jump on in case she had something.
Uh, Tracy, I do, but you can go first. It, I don't, just don't move from the slide yet.
And maybe.
Don't worry, it's the last one.
Um, another consideration under safety protocols, Jeremiah, and I'm sure you've thought about this, but I know there's a lot of educators, um, well, and of course, parents and. On here, um, one of the other safety pro- protocols I can think of as an educator is a substitute teacher in a hybrid model. Um, and I know that substitute teachers are able to get the vaccines. Um, is that one of the considerations within there? So for example, if. Uh, I will pick on Mrs. Prom because she's one of my daughter's teachers. If Mrs. Prom has to be out and she's doing a hybrid and. Uh, you bring in a sub, then we start a whole new transition of where has that person been and so on and so forth. So. Um, I just, for my, for my peace of mind, this has been considered? No? Yes?
You had to pick, uh, some pretty big shoes to fill as an example.
I know. She was, well, I, I, yeah, I, I hear her name every day, so she's.
You should, in a positive way. Uh, yes, that, that is a strong consideration. Um. We have, we've took, we've, you know, one of the things our ESD has been really helpful with is, is. Uh, putting together a panel of principals who have experienced reopening. Uh, and re-closing of schools, both in Oregon and in other states, including, uh, California, Arizona. One of the things that the principals shared with us right away is, um, get ready, cause a substitute is going to be very difficult to come by. Uh, and you are a substitute. You, meaning, uh, building principals, vice principals, people like myself. Uh, have to be ready to roll up their sleeves and get into that classroom and be, uh, fill those shoes, because that's, that's the reality of it. That dynamic might, um, be alleviated a little bit by the availability of a vaccine for some of our substitutes. Um, and we hope so, cause we depend, we depend on that, but we've, we've had difficulty in, in metro area attracting substitutes. Uh, for several years now, as it was. So we, we, we don't have any, uh, we're not under any illusions that that's going to be, uh, less challenging. And most of the, most of the schools that we, we spoke with was helpful because. Not only had they reopened and, and talked about the emotional lift associated with that, but they'd also closed. Uh, mostly because of community spread and, uh, changes in their community numbers. And, um, so it's been, been helpful to talk with those folks about their experiences in both directions. Stacy, you had a question?
I, it just is adding on to kinda what Steve asked about the rebalancing. So Jeremiah, you talked about this a little bit, but. Um, and, and you shared what you believe in i- is the right course. Pro- way to go in terms of a model for elementary, but I wondered. It sounds like, I think you're saying that the decision's not quite been ma- made yet, if you would go to a model where. Um, students who are at home. Um, whether they're on their off day or on day, um, are with a different teacher than the students who are live. And so, um. So what my first question is, has that decision been fully made? Um, my second question is, if, if you're leaning towards having the model where students would. Be with a completely CDL teacher, are you also talking about? The students who are in hybrid but just aren't at school that day? So if you went like with the A B day model. Students are on A day, um, on the B days, they're at home. So who's their teacher? Do they now have two different teachers or do they have two teachers now? Because they have their online teacher and they have their in-person teacher. Because I, I have not seen, I guess I, could you speak to that a little bit more and what that would look like? That's my second question. My third one is, will this be decided before the parent survey goes out? So that parents know, are we talking about simultaneous? Are we talking about not simultaneous? So they're gonna have a new teacher, they're gonna put, um. And or, or we kinda be in flux with that? Will we know?
I'll answer them in reverse order. Uh, the answer has to be. That the parents and the community and the staff know exactly what the model looks like in as much detail as is available. Um, including what we know and what we think we know. They have to have enough information to be able to make an informed decision. Um, all the way around. So that's just in fairness and our, our teachers, what's their hearts have been very clear about that, that, that that's something that they. They feel very, um, you know, they take this very personally. They, they take their relationships with their students very personally and they should. That's the strength, uh, of our staff, uh, even among other, other, uh, districts in, in the nearby. I believe that our, our folks, um. They take that deep to heart. And we, we're, we're in a district that operates on a pretty lean, you know, pre- pretty lean staffing. We don't have a, a, a whole lot of TOSSAs or teachers on special assignments who specialize. We. We're also a one school per level district. So for, for a number of reasons, we're, we're relatively lean. And while I wish to, to answer your second question, I wish that there were a second person available. For, uh, maybe a student who's, who's coming on an A morning or an A day. Uh, that during that B time, that there would be a whole separate, um, staff member. That's just not even remotely the way that we're staffed. So, um, what kinds of things might they do and interact with staff when they're, when they're at home still? And those things, Rain, I'll give you a range of things. Uh, right now, they're, they're interacting with their specials teachers, in particular PE and health and music at the elementary level. Uh, and, and some library, uh, in an asynchronous fashion. And certainly that would be. Uh, content that they would continue to receive and interact with, uh, when they were, um, when they were doing their at-home learning. So that's, that's almost a guarantee that that would be the, the case. We cannot, uh, we don't believe that we can bring students to school and automatically for a short period of time or even limited days and then automatically. Change their classroom placement by, by, uh, offering all of their specially designed instruction if they have an IEP in a pull-out fashion. We don't feel it would be right to bring people to school and then immediately take them out of their own classroom. Right? So we intend to offer, um, things like, um, uh, small group reading support, uh, language support. Uh, small, small, perhaps small group work with a counselor, things like that, that would, that would in a in-person setting, that would cross a lot of cohorts. We have to be mindful of how many cohorts of students were limited on, you know, Stacy, how, how many, uh, can interact with one another? Uh, lest there be, lest there be spread within the building. So we have to really limit that as well as protect our staff. And the students and their families, uh, from that kind of a spread. So, uh, those sorts of services, I, I like language support. Um, uh, what you're, what a, uh, family whose student receives what they call, uh. Secret garden supporter, extra reading support, small group reading, uh, that might happen, uh, that is very likely to happen during the at-home time. Um, even when there's an asynchronous day. So when you, when you, when you divide a classroom roughly in half. And try to meet the needs of both of those groups, uh, given the same period of time. You're, you're definitely losing there, something is lost during that and that's, uh, that's collaboration time. It's time for, uh, staff meetings, it's time for IEP meetings. So we need to also carve out time to be, and I need to, to be clear. That there would almost certainly be a day, a day per week or a large part of a day per week that students would be, uh. Would be participating in largely asynchronously when teachers are doing, uh, doing a lot of that collaboration time. The planning time that, that is lost when you divide a class, uh, roughly in half from, from what it was. I'll give a, I'll just give a random grade level. I'm not gonna name the grade level, but I give a, give the size of a grade level and what that could look like. We have some assumptions that. And this is just, this is a wa- a wild guess really, but it's based on a neighboring district's survey data. That while we have about thirteen percent of our students are in, uh, the online only option right now, PLP. And we believe those families want to be there at this point. We've had enough migration back and forth that, at this point, we feel that's pretty stable. They want, they wanna be where they are. Uh, if we, if we take the assumption that a grade level with, um, a hundred and seven students total. And nine of them are in the PLP. That perhaps up to as many as twenty-five. That perhaps up to as many as twenty-five additional students and their families might choose to stay in C D L. And so that would take a, a grade level that currently has five sections. And would um, the grade level currently with five sections with about twenty students per section. And that would mean that uh, if one of those teachers became the C D L responsible person. That uh, that modeling would mean that there would now be four sections. With a little over twenty-four students per, per section. So we have pretty granular. Modeling on that, and I don't, I don't mean to bore anybody, but. It's only as effective as, as the data that we have, and the data we have is based on assumptions at this point. So all of that gets back to the survey. And the importance that our community, um, our staff all have a very clear understanding of what the um. Of what the model is so they can make an informed decision. And I'm not sure I got to your first question because I was going to reverse order, so.
Oh, my first question was, are, is that pretty set at this point? Are you still discussing that model? Um, I also know that, you know, staffing is huge, uh, can sit a huge driver, right? You have to have enough staff to pull off that model um, as well. Because I also think what model you land on will determine who decides to stay in C D L. Who decides to, to choose hybrid. So. In some ways, it's like, you know, one of us, we do need, I, I love your eyes wide open, love. I think. Families have to make a decision and, and like Steve said, we need as much information as possible. That could also then change what we're able to offer depending on how families respond.
That's right. That's right. And so it, for that reason, uh, I'm really grateful that we have a room full of Zoom room anyway. Uh, full of amazing uh, K through five teachers who are sitting down with us to, to do this planning. And they know those dynamics that you're, that you're naming and um. And so I've got staring at a poster in my office that says, clear as kite. It's a Brene Brown quote, one of my favorites. And uh. Um, what you're referring to is we have a chicken and an egg and a cart and a horse. And they all, they all are intertwined and with the, the. More carefully we plan and the more carefully we design and the more carefully we communicate. Uh, we're, we're more inclined to get a better result as we, uh, as we. Are set to open in hybrid. So. Yes.
Okay, I've got several questions. So anybody feel free, I'll watch and raise your hand and I'll stop one of my questions and let you jump in. So I'm not going too far. Um, okay, so with all the, the information that you have on the screen that you took us through. I'd like to understand a little bit of requirements versus protocols. As a board of directors, I think we're all very conscious. I know I'm hyper focused on the liability issue. Knowing that in a school district of our size, unlike neighboring school districts. If uh, you know, while you're trying to wrangle these little kids uh, in a line. One of them takes his mask off, another one's running outside of him, person has to go grab them, somebody observing that could start a lawsuit. In a little school district like ours, that's serious issue. If we have to defend our, the lawsuit for whatever size. That's going to be potentially very damaging to our, our budget, the, with the sizes it is. But you mentioned, so we, so we understand we need to follow the protocols to ensure identity against liability issues, right? So, but you stated, Bob, these are guidelines, state guidelines, we have no choice but to follow these. So can you elaborate a little on that? Where, how that's separate guidelines versus requirements?
Uh, well, Eric, I would say from our standpoint, um, we will look at those two things as one and the same. And, and that we need to do both. And um, you know, an example that Jeremiah showed was a classroom setup of six feet and thirty-five feet. That's a requirement. Um, but it's also written as a guideline within the, within the document. So I, I don't know that I can distinguish. Between those two things as cleanly as you, you might like to see. One, one thing we've asked the state to do. Is to help us by identifying uh, with a list of which ones um, are truly mandatory. That, that this triggers liability issues if we don't follow this plan. And I do not have a clear picture of that yet. So the way I look at it is all these things would need to be followed. That's how I look at it.
Okay, I thought that.
Yeah, I just, I'll add the um, the yang a little bit to that. A- and we know. This is an elementary school and every day in elementary schools. The rules of the, the, the rules that the adults have written are, are tested, are stretched. Uh, by, by young people and um, in fact, one of the things we're, that we're finding when we talk to. Uh, folks who have reopened is that the kids, the kids actually do pretty well once they've had the training. Sometimes they're, they're the adults who need the reminding uh, around the mask or around the, um, and, and I find that to be true. So I, I expect there to be challenges with this and it, it can't be binary, black or white. Things will happen and we have to, we have to also respond and, and help, you know, there is, there is clear guidance around mask wearing in particular. That if children are, have difficulty wearing masks, they have to be, they have to be assisted in that and not punished for it. But a, a recent change to the um, to the guidance included in this version is that. Placement in C D L, if that becomes too big an issue, is, is a possibility, i- if it's just not working out.
Eric, the standard is willful disregard. And that means that uh, there's a standard there and we either ignored it or we chose not to learn it. And, and uh, that we willfully did that. Uh, inadvertent is something completely different. And so I just want you to be aware that uh, while we need to be aware of liability and that is an issue. Uh, w- we do not plan to be in willful disregard of any of the guidelines or protocols. Okay, we, we plan to um, consider those as what we need to do and have to do. Uh, and schools all around the country are showing they can do that. So there's no reason that we should believe that we're incapable of doing that.
I, I think I'm more concerned about the third party, the third option, right? The people that. Follow lawsuit regardless of willful or, or negligent, right? So. That's the, that's the concern for myself as a director that how that would hurt potentially financially, this will disregard, take us under.
When, when we have all of the defense uh, costs, um, we bear.
Right, that's it.
Yeah.
Um, shifting gears, do you currently have all the equipment stockpiled that would be necessary, the cleaning supplies, the P P E? Are we there for a potential hybrid reopen?
I would say ninety percent.
Okay.
We have thousands of masks. We have gallons of um, sanitation supplies. Uh, we have sprayers to spray classrooms where we can quickly sanitize a classroom. Uh, we, we have, we, we started stockpiling that last spring. Uh, because last spring, remember, we thought we might still open in the springtime. And uh, and so we started stockpiling at that time. Um, and we, we, we truly have uh, high volumes of all those things.
Cool. And, and regarding the survey, I, I kind of feel like we need to have multiple surveys sent out. Um, just two cents on this real quick. Um, we need to provide people with the, what the different options might be. And then see if we can narrow them down to the what if, you know, I think. I suspect that based on the communications we received, we will find a lot of people that just want to stay remote. It would, if you wound up with a smaller percentage than expected. Uh, what I didn't hear from you is would you consider a two through five full day in class? Would that be one of the options that you've put forward? You know, again, provided you have a smaller size amount of people wanting their job in the class.
Well, I, Stacy mentioned a minute ago, you run, run into a workforce issue. You, you, you have to have, based on our modeling of how many teachers we have and how many kids we have. That, that has to be fairly equally distributed out. And so if we had a small number that were. In school, I can't picture it being all day, every day. But it would uh, uh, I don't think it's, it's achievable with kind of your basic premise there.
Okay. I'll pass the torch.
But, but it's a pipe dream that I share, Eric.
Actually, we, we have talked a lot about that kind of model. I, I don't believe it's the right model to come out of uh, um, a start. If we chose to reopen, I don't think it's the model to come out with the start because I think. There's too much that has to be worked through um, for that kind of model, but we might grow into that.
Uh, something, uh, I think this goes back to Steve. Uh, his question and something that's sort of stuck in my head. Uh, when he talked about, when we were looking at that photograph with the desks spread out and we can see. Uh, a teacher desk in the far corner and we're, we're hearing about these mandates that have to be followed. Um, and when, when I heard of, uh, Steve, I think it was your question. So what if I'm the kid in the middle? And I got a question about uh, my math problem. Uh, can the teacher come to me? No. Well, then in that situation, it almost sounds like. The only solution is Chromebooks. In the classroom. Because that'd be about the only way that the, the teacher could interact with what's in front of the student and then sort of not shout, but. Talk at least the answer across the classroom. But then if that's really the case, if that's, if that's what that picture means. Yeah, I, I hope that people in our community would. Know in advance coming into this. Do, do we really want every other day in-person C D L? Is that? Is that better? And I'm not saying. What we have right now is, is wonderful. I just mean, wow. I- if we're down to teacher can't help a kid at a desk except remotely and now we're taking. Remote that we maybe already wish we didn't have and we're dividing that by two. Uh, I, I don't know. I, I hope the community has a strong um, mental image of that and what it would look like.
Yeah, I, I would just, I would just tell you, Greg, in the last ten months. We've had lots of issues that we never would have envisioned a way to solve that problem uh, a year ago. And we've solved that problem. Uh, you know, I don't know, I don't know specifically what the answer is to your question about how do we communicate inside of a classroom to make sure kids get the one-on-one. Support that they need. But my guess is that there'll be other solutions other than a Chromebook or other than shouting it out across the room. I think there's other solutions to, to do that. And uh, but we haven't experienced it yet. And so uh, once we experience it, our, our people, our teachers are fabulous. They've done a fabulous job this year. In making the pivot that they had to make. And um, and taking care of kids in a way that they never realized that they would ever do in their careers. And uh, so I, I, I think we have people that can figure it out. That's what I would tell you.
And without getting, without getting into the weeds too, too badly, Greg, or I, I do have to say, I. Um, I'm, I'm a technology advocate and uh. My, my third graders had plenty of screen time. I'm ready for her to be in a space. And I'll, I'll use the example of uh, earlier, um, Tracy alluded to Linda Prom. In a calculus class or especially in algebra one class or algebra one point five, Linda Prom makes an amazing use. Uh, a really dumb technology, a whiteboard and a whiteboard pen, which is what a lot of our teachers are using now in small group work, right? That's a lot more efficient than even on a Zoom screen uh, to quickly assess what students, trends of what students are understanding or not. And very quickly and very cheaply turn that, turn around misunderstandings into understandings. So I pressed back a little bit around, uh, perhaps at the secondary school level, but. Especially with our youngest kids, they need to be playing, they need to be touching, they need to be talking to one another about their thinking. Um, so that'd be my only other response to that.
But Jeremiah, on, on, on that, the plane and, and all that stuff, they, they've got to stay six feet apart from each other. They're not going to be, they're not going to be pushing each other on the swing. Um, you know, they're not going to be, you know, skipping and, and doing that. And also I'm glad that you, you, you brought that up because. And Bob, jump in please. Um, a few months ago, when we were talking, when we suspended football. And then um, I think it was the O H A A said, okay, you guys can do practice, but you have to have a ball per person. Only one person can touch a ball. You can't have a second person touching the ball. Has that changed? So on the playground equipment, they play wall ball. Is it possible for two kids to play wall ball? Is it possible for two kids to play basketball with one ball? Where are we at with, with that kind of stuff?
Generally speaking, the, the, the science on that has evolved, the understanding of what uh, is communicable outside. My understanding of the understanding is that, uh, for example, early on in this, in COVID, we were. Uh, taping off play structures. Uh, we're, we're in the current guidance where we're um. Urged not to spray down, for example, not to sanitize play structures. That rather than that, we, we wash hands or use hand sanitizer before and after a recess. But that we don't go to that degree of um. You, you're probably, probably not. Every kid's got their own ball and certainly uh, kids may play on the play structure, for example. I don't know, I don't think it's, I don't think it's the football practice, but um, it second grade recess, yes.
Well, no, that was it though. I mean, the guidance was that they couldn't share equipment, they couldn't share um. You know, balls and some of that. Um, and that's what I was looking for clarification. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, well, there, there is a lot of those questions, Steve, that we'll have to dig in deeper as far as uh, what the, what the actual guide says this. If you remember what I showed you all the different guidances that we've received over time. Each one of those have changes in how they, uh, how they've approached it and what they have learned. People have learned around the United States and the world that has changed the guidance over time. So when we get ready to that point. Uh, wall ball was one of my favorites. And um, I think we need to uh, make sure that we really understand it and hopefully there, there are ways that kids can still be kids. And do lots of the activities that kids can do and we can still keep them safe while they do it. That's my hope.
Bob, have you heard any tentative if another guidance is coming?
I really, really hope not. I, I have not. Um. Uh, I've been invited to a meeting with the governor tomorrow. And um, I believe the content of that meeting will be around the vaccine rollout. And how that is going around the state and any support that we need from her office to support that effort. I also believe it will be um. Uh, that she will uh, use the opportunity to give us a message that. Um, she has gone out a long ways to push educators in front of a lot of other. Fields and people that are in need of the vaccine. And she did that because um, of the importance of getting kids back into school. We know, we absolutely know. We have kids that are not thriving in this model. Their social emotional health is not well. Uh, how they're, how they're thriving academically. I also know there are many kids that are thriving in this. And I know that because parents send me lots of notes. Uh, advocating for whichever side of that issue that they happen to believe that we should be on. I, I hope we don't have to get to a point where a parent has to choose. Um, in that way, I hope we give lots of options when we get to there. But uh, but I know the expectation, certainly on the part of our governor. Is that we're vaccinating educators to get kids back in school. I know that's our expectation.
I'm going to make this, try to make this a quick question. So I know we probably have lots more to go through, but going back to Stacy's um, comment about work source and um. Splitting the classes and kids, um, if we're bringing, if we're talking about bringing back a, a K two, a K three at spring break and we have a group of. Teachers who are going to be doing that, um, we have a majority of the teachers who will still be doing C D L. Who's, and I think we talked about this a little bit at the last meeting, but because there's kind of new people here in a new meeting. Who is making those decisions on? Who is going to be required to go back in the classroom, uh, even though, you know, I know they'll have to have a vex vaccine. There's still a big fear in going back to, into a classroom. Versus who gets to still um, work from distance learning? How is that being determined for the staff?
So I, I'll tell you, it has not been determined. Um, from the outset of this, uh, I've made the commitment to our staff. That we would work closely with them on making the critical decisions about returning to school. And about how we're operating in C D L. Um, and I absolutely plan that that will be what we do going forward. We start tomorrow night with those discussions. We've actually been having those discussions for several weeks. Uh, as we've involved our staff in lots of information and lots of sharing of information. Uh, but it's, it's critical that our support staff and our teachers. Feel that they are being protected and that they are safe um, as they return.
And maybe you could speak a little for those that are here tonight that weren't at the board meeting about the Teachers United Resolution that they presented at the last meeting, because that really speaks towards any decision we can make right now.
Yeah, Eric, I don't remember the exact wording of that, but here, here's what I will tell you. I thought it was incredibly well done by the, the teachers that presented that. I think they presented it in a manner that, uh, indicated that they really want to be in, back in the classroom with kids. Uh, and they really want to be safe. And the vaccine is really important to them to be able to get back into school. And I'll talk about that. And I think Greg's going to ask me for a recommendation later on, and I'll talk about that at that time of, um, what I would recommend. You can reject that recommendation. You can accept that recommendation. You can modify it. You can do what you want. But, um, I'll talk about that in a little bit.
I wanted to go back, um, just to clarify, and I, I think I've got this right, but I think it's good for us all to make sure we understand that with the vaccine rollout. So speaking of safety and vaccines and all of that, um, uh, vaccination started today, which is, which is great for educators. As an educator myself, I'm scheduled for Friday, which is great. But, uh, so thinking about timeline, um, starting with the different waves of educators. It looks like, I mean, I'm in, I'm in that first wave, so I'm going to be vaccinated by the, you know, my completion. It looks like, I guess, the end of February. But with our other waves, it could take as long as beginning of, end of February, beginning of March for even their first dose. So that puts them not getting their second dose to potentially end of March. And then wait that little bit of waiting period till fully. I know it's not fully, but the more, you know, what am I trying to say?
After the booster.
After, yeah, the highly, where it's more, the highest effective, uh, coverage. So for, because our, our older students, the staff for middle high, that's kind of falling in that more later zone. Your anticipation, if all goes well under the current plan, is that elementary staff would all have received their second dose and that kind of extra waiting time prior to uh, the end of spring break. Is that, that's the timeline.
Yeah. So, so just, just so that the audience knows, I, I'm really, really involved in this. We're involved with, uh, a handful of superintendents from the metropolitan area, and we're meeting with all hospital executives that are, uh, assigned to distribute the vaccine during convention center. So, so this is something I'm really familiar with. I was exchanging emails with Oregon Health Authority today as, as we are asking as educators in the, in the metro area to be able to move to wave two next week. We were highly successful in getting the people that were eligible at wave one to get scheduled appointments, um, for this next seven days. And, um, uh, they did open, um, the second window of scheduling. And we have made the request, there's a meeting tomorrow that I, that I think we'll get some clarification as to whether we could move to wave two. For educators, for us, we had about, if I remember the numbers right, Jeremiah, roughly 75 people in wave one, and we've got about 45 to 50 in wave two. Does that sound about right?
Yes.
But that for Gladstone, that's what it looks like. We had a very high percentage of our, uh, wave one people that were able to schedule yesterday. And, um, uh, in the next seven days that they will uh, receive their vaccine for round one. And that's our, that's our K one teachers. So if we're thinking about K one, um, and I believe the product that we're using right now is Pfizer. And there's a three-week period between, um, roughly three, it's a, it's a range of days, but roughly three weeks between, um, dose one and dose two. And then there's roughly two weeks, um, after dose two until it's fully immunized at that point. So if you, you calculate that out, that's, uh, that's five weeks from now would be fully immunized. And what's that? Or is that, or is that put as roughly first of March, um, somewhere in that area? So that you consider that that could be our K one teaching staff. And, and all the teachers, the support K one is the potential.
Hey, Bob, when they sign you up and you're scheduled for, you get your first one, are they setting aside your second dose?
They set it aside and, and they're given a date of when they, when they reappear at the convention center for their second dose. Actually, those are, I, I believe, I, I tried to remember what I saw on Monday, or I believe those are actually in two different locations in the convention center, first dose and second dose.
Yeah, a colleague of mine and her husband went today and they didn't even know she got Pfizer, he got Moderna or whatever, like they didn't, they don't necessarily tell you what dose you're getting when you get there. But then when you leave, they'll tell, they'll know what you had. But yeah, she, that was kind of shocking to her. She didn't, she didn't know what she was getting until they said, here you go, you've got Pfizer. And then.
And, and, uh, you have to have the same product second time through. So that's a real key. The game changer will happen later this spring when the Johnson and Johnson product is approved. And, uh, that product is a single dose, um, vaccine. And it doesn't require, require the extreme cold temperature that these vaccines have to be stored in. And so that it's, it's more probable that that will be given in doctor's clinics.
Hopefully they're test, doing a field trial on children.
That's probably more than you wanted to know about vaccines. And it's a whole lot more than I knew three months ago.
And I'm sorry, I'm looking at the, um, agenda. That Jeremiah, that was at the Gladstone transition reopening report? I thought so. Okay.
In all its glory.
Yeah.
So there, there are some people that have been, um, waiting to, to share some of their comments. Board, do you feel, are there any other questions we want to ask about the discussion reports or? I would like to move us on, but I want to make sure.
Yeah, Greg, I just have one quick one. Um, Jeremiah, how long do you think it'll take you to get the final modeling done?
It's the first priority. So there are many things to be, in essence, negotiated. It is negotiation, uh, that we're engaged in. But, um, that's the first priority because everything depends on that. Right? So, um, I, I hesitate to put a date on it, but I aspire to, uh, land on it within the week.
Okay, that's a, what I'm trying to determine is, um, what is our, our, uh, longer term obstacle, right? Is it vaccinations or is it the time you'll need to get the modeling done?
The, the length of the runway that we can provide, and we don't want to skip steps by any means, but the length of runway that we can provide for staff and for families benefits everyone. So that's the, that's the urgency isn't to, the urgency isn't to have a, a stamp on something and move forward and move on. The urgency is to give the longest possible runway to staff and to, into families.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So we are gonna move slightly. Items three and four. So, uh, the public participation part, um, we, we would like to do now. And let me just say a few things about the change and why and how it works. So, uh, I, I said at the beginning of the meeting that, uh, we had changed our Zoom license to accommodate more people. Uh, I think that is also letting us, uh, change the way that we do public participation. So, uh, now we, we kind of have two rooms going at the same time. I think the, the larger audience is seeing us, uh, as, um, presenters. And so there are these two groups. So, um, we are going to be able to bring people from the larger audience who have submitted some comments and bring them into the presenter group. Uh, allow them to present. Following what we've been doing in the past, uh, I'll be timing for three minutes. There's a little bit of stuff we're not entirely sure. It may take a minute or two to move a person into the room, uh, allow them to speak and then transition them out and bring someone else in. There, there could be some wrinkles there. Um, we, we have done some of it, but, uh, we'll, we'll see how it goes. So, uh, ask for a little bit of patience with that process. And I'm just setting up my timer here.
Greg, do you want to mention too, that once they're reading, we're not, uh, as much as we'd like to, um, react that that's, do you want to go over that really quick?
Thank you so much. Yeah. So, uh, thank you. Board comment, uh, or time uh, for public comments is intended for the public to communicate with us. Tell us what is on your mind. Uh, and we are here to listen to you. It's not really a time for discussion. There, there won't be a, a back and forth. That's, that's not the nature of, of that time. And that's, by the way, thank you again, Tracy, for asking. That is not something we are suddenly doing, uh, at least for the three years that I've been here. Uh, it has always been that way. So, um, thank you. Uh, I'm, you know, look, the one thing that I don't have loaded up at the moment is my, is my list of people. I know that the, the first two are a mother and a daughter. And I Jeremiah or Natalie, I am.
I'm with you. Fair to call the. Last name is Zimbom.
Thank you. Yeah.
I will move, uh, I will move, uh, and, uh, Mrs. Zimbom, I will move you over now.
Bob, just a heads up, you're not on mute.
Hi. Um, I, I actually didn't know that we were speaking. All right. Um, we just, I want to think, I just wanted to thank the board for, um, continuing to provide an amazing program, uh, through distance learning.
I'm, I'm super sorry. Uh, please forgive me. The, the problem here is me. Okay? So, uh, and I got lost trying to be able to work on something here. I'm embarrassed. So, uh, we, we need people to, uh, read their, the statement that they, um, submitted for the most part. And maybe you did that, that I, that's what I should have in front of me right now. And I apologize, uh, but I want to make sure I'm, I'm saying that clearly for everyone and who will follow. And again, uh, my apologies. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I apologize. I didn't realize that part. I put it into the form and don't, didn't memorize it and don't have something to read off of right now. But I, I just, I know that I started with thanking the board and really appreciating the work you've done. We are fully in support of continuing distance learning, especially for the middle and high schoolers through the end of the school year. And do not want to return to in-person schooling. We don't think that it is safe for the community, um, until the community has been vaccinated. And I think that pretty much summed up my three points that I had on there. Um, and I, I apologize for not being prepared. I really, I thought you were going to read them like you have before.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Can I pause you for just a moment? And it might be more than just a moment. What I would like to do, um, and this is clunky as heck. Uh, I would like to, um, email you your comments. You, Ginger, you're all right. I'll, 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 I'll take that. That's my fault. But if, if I could for comments going forward, let's pause long enough to, uh, email you a copy.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize. This is going to probably take me a couple of minutes. All right, um, Marley, I'm gonna be sending this to your uh, Gladstone student account. Thanks again for your patience, just a second here. And so, uh, again, because of the, the con- clunkiness of what I'm doing, if you would like to speak and you don't, uh, have it brought up, let, let me know. And again, this, this is totally on me and my apologies to everyone. Okay, I, I think it's headed your way.
Okay, um, good evening, everyone. I am Marley Brusimbaum and I'm a high school sophomore at GHS. I'm not a parent and I don't understand the difficulties of being a parent, especially when it comes to little kids, but I do know that children need a routine. Teachers and students have been working hard on this routine the entire school year and opening schools to hybrid would basically ruin what they've worked on. Most arguments I've heard for reopening schools is that young children need to learn how to socialize, but that won't be able to happen with this type of schooling. Children need to sit in, children will sit in a room for hours a day far away from other students with few interactions and with no interactive group work and no real recess. If you want your child to have socialized, if you want your child to have the socialization aspect of school, you might as well keep them in CDL. For me personally, I love distance learn, I love the distance learning program that I'm on and I would rather stay on that than go back to school since I am getting high quality education, social interactive, interaction from my classes. And most importantly, I am keeping me and my family safe. Thank you, school board, for all your work and your hard work and making this difficult decision.
Ginger and Marley, thank you both so much. And, uh, thank you for being patient while I worked through that. And the, the board appreciates your time and, um, also being here and, and saying that to us directly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, uh, I, I think Glenda is here. Right? The next person, um, giving comment is Glenda Scherer. Minute. The chair recognizes Glenda Scherer for three minutes.
Sorry, it's kind of dark in here. My apologies. So I have a question that I have a word that I, um, typed the wrong word in there. And Greg, you've made it quite clear that I have to exactly follow the script. So I want to get your permission to change that word so I won't be muted.
Right. I think I wrote, if I remember what I wrote to you, I said certainly not words like, um, or corrections like that. But yes. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay. I want to state that public education exists for the purpose of educating students. It is a benefit that is, I'm sorry, it is supposed to be a benefit provided to my daughter. We returned our Chromebook at the beginning of January. My daughter has not been zooming for her education since then. But I'm most certain that the district is still collecting attendance dollars on her despite my, not meeting her educational needs. How is this ethical? What are you expecting parents to do? We were told two weeks to flatten the curve. Schools are safe. Yet this has gone on day after day, week after week, month after month. What has to happen to convince the school board that schools should open by February 15th? One, suicide? Two, three in the One suicide, two, three in the community? What needs to happen?
Thank you, Glenda. And again, I I think you realize, but this is this isn't a back and forth. But, you know, philosophically, those are those are good questions and we we struggle with that as well. Thank you.
And I'm still feeling unheard. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I I believe that is all that that we received for public comments. I do want to acknowledge that we did get some just letters to the board from people that were not signing up for public comment. And I I want to thank them for sharing that with us to help us. So that brings us to action items. The first action item is approve the extension of CDL to March 19th, 2021. It seems right for me to read this and then we can perhaps motion and perhaps second and then have a discussion.
Motion to approve until March 19th.
All right. Um, let let me, let me read this and then we'll we'll come back around. Thank you. A resolution, the Gladstone School Board of Directors reopening of schools in hybrid. Whereas the Gladstone School District is learning, forgive me, whereas the Gladstone School District is a learning community dedicated to educational excellence and belonging for all students. And whereas the state of Oregon closed schools and in-person learning to stop the spread of COVID-19. And whereas the state of Oregon on January 19th, 2021, has issued health metrics as advisory. And whereas the state of Oregon and Clackamas County Health are prioritizing vaccines for educational staff. And whereas the Gladstone School District is following the scientific best practices for stopping the spread of the virus in school. And whereas the Gladstone School District will slowly implement students' return to school in a hybrid model based on the Oregon Department of Education's Ready Set Learners Guidance and the Operational Blueprint submitted to the Clackamas County Health Department. And whereas the Glad the Gladstone School District will work to ensure staff receives vaccines and follow the recommended immunity time before returning to the workplace. And now, therefore be it resolved, the Gladstone School District Board directs the superintendent to prioritize in-person learning and services while taking appropriate steps to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 among teachers, staff, administrators, and students in line with state guidelines. And be it resolved, the Gladstone School Board directs the superintendent to continue with comprehensive distance learning through spring break and monitor the county metrics and staff vaccines in preparation for hybrid learning. That is the resolution.
Great. Can I ask a quick question before we move on with that? So you said, I just want to be clear. So you said the resolution goes through March 19th. But that doesn't mean that automatically on the 19th, we would go to hybrid, correct? We still need to check the numbers before we would move on further.
Yes, we are directing to remain closed until that point. But at the same time, we are directing administration to prepare to open. And I I I think we expect them to continue developing what we've seen tonight. And I I see those two things as going together.
Okay, so preparing to open, but we're not saying open yet. Okay.
We are, we are remaining in CDL through March 19th. We hope to open. I think we have talked about how I I'm trying to, and I think perhaps you are too. We're trying to clarify for people who are who are watching. Thank you. Um, I I think this resolutions me, this resolution means we we don't feel that we could open before that date. We've all heard a lot about the vaccine. We've also heard a lot about metrics. Mix all of those things up. I I think that we can't, we can't look the public in the eye and say we're going to open before then, so make plans. During that time, we can direct all resources toward opening and having a pan a plan in place. Because I think this board and our community can now see a timeline where all staff will be vaccinated. And we will have time to have these agreements with our staff. And from that, we'll have a better developed plan. It would be great, you know, if that was something we begin to look at in February at our next board meeting, but I but I don't know.
Hey, we need a first and second before you discuss this any further.
Thank you. Did it first for Tracy move?
I don't know if this is just splitting hairs a little bit, but the resolution calls and it and it uses capital letters. So I want to make sure the title of it is correct. Oregon Department of Education says Ready Set Learners Guidance. It is the Ready Schools Safe Learners Guidance. So we need to make that edit to our resolution so that it it does correctly name the RSSL Guidance Ready Schools Safe Learners is the title.
Thank you.
Again, we need to discuss edits to it after it's been seconded.
Thank you. So it is motion and seconded, so board discussion.
Well, I support Stacy's suggestion that we need to modify the name of that, obviously. The I think that it needs the addition of directing the superintendent to be have all the preparations in place to be ready to open the schools at the boards, at the boards discussion or at that point, right? So it doesn't really speak to that. It talks about prioritizing it. But it doesn't say directly, we need to have this plan in place. I think the community, for the most part, I've heard feels we should already be there. You know, we've had enough time to get there. So I think that that it behooves us to add that verbiage in here as a direction.
Just as one opinion, I I hear what you're saying. I disagree about adding it because it it it's hard to know for certain that we can open. I think that we absolutely need to direct them to work toward that goal. I believe that allows us to help hold administration accountable and report back on the progress and all of that with the goal of opening. I don't feel that we have the authority to say the words. We we don't have any control over the factors that are going to ultimately make that happen. So that that is why I I don't. I I want what you want. I don't feel that it belongs here.
I don't think we should make a promise we can't keep. I think there's, you know, we're we're the Ready School Safe Learners follows the CDC, which is what we have to, which is what we have to to follow. We need to abide by that. When Kate Brown came in with the advisory thing, I think it threw in everybody for a loop because it really put school boards and parents and administrators in a very difficult position. And I agree, I think, you know, it's it's good to start making those plans. It's like a fire drill. You know, you got to make the plan. You got to be ready in case it happens. Um, personally, I, you know, the the thought of, you know, in my personal opinion, that, you know, the thought of I can't send this, I can't send a child back to school unless I know that they are going to be completely safe. And every single protocol that Jeremiah talked about has to be in place, that the parent has to want it. Um, it's, you know, we're in a pandemic, we're in something we've never been in before. And there's nothing in my in my soul, after doing this for almost 30 years and having two children of my own, there's nothing more important to me and I want the community and the teachers to know than the safety of those children. And the safety of the children has to do with the safety of the teachers. And yes, teachers, you know that I care about you a lot. But if we cannot guarantee the safety of these kids, and I know their mental health is just as important, but their physical health comes first, that's what we can control. And so I'm not for making a promise. That's why I needed to make sure that Greg, I understood that this we're saying this is just till the 19th and we'll kind of get ourselves ready. We'll get our decks in a row. And then we'll 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 see it then. But I very, there's, there's two. My my metaphor that I'm already sick of that I've made up is it's too many holes in the bucket with not enough plugs. So our kids, your kids, for every parent who's on here, your child's safety is the number one priority. To me, I can't speak for the board, but that's that's my, that's my two cents.
Before anybody else goes, can I just clarify my statement? I'm not saying we need to reopen at that point. I'm saying we need to add some, since we only have two small paragraphs in this whole thing about what we actually are asking to be done. I'm looking for accountability that when we're, when it does come that time, if everybody's vaccinated, if we're ready to go, that we have a plan in place, that we have the equipment in place that's needed. If then, at that point, we need to wait because of other guidelines, so be it. But we need to hold our administration accountable to be ready at this point. That's that's the kind of verbiage I'm looking to put in it.
Eric, could you give us a like a sentence? What what would that sound like? I'm looking at the guy at what we have and saying that uh, they will take, taking appropriate steps to mitigate the transition transmission that talks about in in line with state guidelines that talks about the safety and then directs the superintendent to continue a CDL and preparation for the hybrid learning. So I think you're right. It just says preparation for the hybrid learning. And I think what I'm hearing you say is you want that to be a little bit more robust in the language that the hybrid learning plan. So so could you make a proposal to us of what you are thinking so we could edit that? Or and and move and, you know, accepted or not?
May I interject something really quick? When we started on this, the first now there now therefore be it resolved wasn't there. And we were really, we talked about, and I think when I sent a draft for consideration, it it was more about the final one that we weren't going to open before then. And I I want to point out that even if it it doesn't, maybe it's not enough. But that prior paragraph is intended to do what you're asking. I I I hear you saying it maybe doesn't go far enough. But we went from merely, we're not going to open for at least this long to what are you going to do in the meantime? And this board is directing our administrators and our teachers to get ready to open. I that was the intent of that. It was meant to be teeth.
I hear Eric just saying that we want to put in there that we want the plan, right? Now, instead of just saying, we want you to prioritize this, we actually want you to deliver a plan to us in that period of time. And I support that. I would, I want to see, just like I asked Jeremiah, how long will it take to get that modeling done? I want to see the plan, right? What does that really look like? And and I support putting that as a resolution that we expect the plan to be delivered in that period of time. It doesn't bind us to a return date, by the way. We we still get to decide that separately. But if we get to a point where we could return, we don't have a plan, we're really have a problem, right? So I would want to see a deliverable of a plan as part of that resolution.
All right. We can, I believe, take a motion on and forgive me if if any one of you is is sitting on your copy. I did not brush up on the resolution to amend something, but I think it would go along the the same lines. So at this point, let me say it without a quote. But at this point, I I believe we have the suggestion by Eric and and Jay, but you someone will need to motion and second this, that we amend the language to include something to the effect of now therefore be it resolved, the Gladstone School District Board directs the superintendent to produce a plan by
Oh, okay, I'll, I'd say I'd add at the end of that resolution or that part of it. So where it ends with administrators and students in line with state guidelines. And directs the superintendent to provide a plan to enter into hybrid with modeling, equipment and staffing plan in place, something along those lines.
Would it, wouldn't it come maybe after the last one? Because it the the last says the be it in monitor the kind of in and staff vaccines in preparation for hybrid learning? It directs the superintendent to continue a CDL through spring. Oh, this one's monitor metrics in preparation. Okay. I see where you're going with putting it in there, the now therefore. Okay, one note I do want to say is I have seen other boards, watched other board meetings, amend resolutions. They do what we're doing right now. I haven't read the book out, but I'll just say what I've seen. Eric says his edits. Greg, you have that Google Doc. You could literally edit it right there here and now.
I'm on a PDF sadly.
I have a Google Doc if I have the editing right to it. I opened it up as a Google Doc. Anyway, we can edit it immediately. And then now we all see it. We can then do another motion and second about the amended resolution.
And if Greg, you're the host, you can, you can share, this is a Zoom, you can share, you can allow share Stacy to share her screen.
I'm not the host.
Now, is Natalie the host?
Yes, it's open for you to share, Stacy.
Okay, you do you guys want me to share my screen so we can edit it right now?
Yes, please.
I think that would be
Yes.
Maybe get it. Okay, let's see. Pick the right one here.
I would say for the record, I don't think we're asking anybody to do anything they weren't going to do anyhow. But I do think explicitly stating this is important in this resolution.
Agreed.
Okay, can you guys see that?
Yes.
So we're looking at here. So now Eric, go ahead with saying again what you were thinking and I'll try to type it in.
Uh, again, this is just a starting point, but and directs the superintendent to provide a plan for hybrid. Uh-oh.
Uh-oh. Let me try again.
We're there. There you go. To provide a plan for hybrid that includes staffing, equipment and modeling logistics.
I'm going to model what hybrid bottle logistics maybe.
I'm looking at wondering if we actually could have two different. No, maybe it goes together. I was wondering if we should have two different paragraphs for that, but let me read through it again.
I don't think it would go, the and is for the and be it resolved, right? So do you think maybe it's another and be it resolved?
What I'm thinking, I'm I'm reading it through again, just trying. I I like things short and to the point. So that's where I'm looking at it going, okay, do we have two? Do we have two different ideas here and should we, should we break those apart? And Stacy, I wonder, do you think like take out the word And Stacy, I wonder, do you think like take out the word while and say and, and take appropriate steps? Or a- anybody jump in if I'm, if my grammar is.
Where, where, where at Tracy? Sorry.
Oh, I'm pointing to it like you can see it.
Why up here while?
Yeah, while, or I wonder if would, if we said and take appropriate steps. Or let me, I can read that through again. So directs this.
To prioritize in-person learning and services while taking.
Oh, and then they're, okay. Learning, okay.
So you, you're right. I mean, one thing you guys remember is that, I mean, the school district does have to provide a blueprint to the state and to the county health. So we're kind of just saying what they already have to do. Um, it has to be provided to the state and to the county health department anyway. I'm fine putting it into the resolution. It is something that has to happen anyway.
I think as long as we're at this point expecting to go through spring break. If we pass this resolution, then we should have a plan in place by the end of spring break. Whether we use it or not, I think that needs to be tied into that statement. This is my proposal that, uh. That it's tied in to the statement of through spring break.
Okay, um, Eric, what do you think about saying something that includes all required components of the RSSL guidance?
Sure.
Because then that gets everything, right?
Yeah.
It gets everything and it, and we, we're following the guidelines of the CDC.
So I'm, I'm only concerned if we tie a date to only that. We, I'm just, operationally, we've talked about at least one survey. Um, we've also talked about, um, the need to bargain. And I, I don't, I think, you know, ideally those will happen quickly. I think everybody wants to open. Some of the important components of that plan. Are, are probably going to require survey results and MOUs. So I, I, I like it. I'm, my only concern is, uh. Yeah, let, let's be careful about, uh, putting a time on it.
A date.
Yeah, I, I, I agree because we're, we're saying it, we're, we're holding, you know, we're holding, we're being held accountable. We're holding ourselves accountable to. To the standard set forth. And whether we have a date in there or not, it's going to get done because we're saying it's going to get done.
Do we break our resolution? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, um, we, we are going to bring you updates. This will not be, um, packaging an entire package of a, of a plan and presenting it to you sometime in late March. Um, you're going to get portions of this plan as we move along. Um, part of that plan will be dictated by, um, the negotiations that we will be doing with our staff. And, uh, so, so board, you will not be surprised at the end. Um, I have no problem at all. Um, having you ask for a detailed plan, I think at some point. Uh, Greg and Stacy, I'll need to sit down with you and figure out exactly what does that mean? Does that mean you want a diagram of where kids are going to sit on a bus? Um, or, or, you know, what, what does that look like? I know you want to see what form of hybrid plan we will be in. I think that decision will be made relatively soon. And we'll be able to get more specificity around that for you as to what that looks like. So the, the general tenor of where you're headed, I, I don't have any problem with because all this has to be done.
Yeah.
A lot of it, a lot of it already is done.
That's why Stacy, I was going with specifically, um, the modeling, the staffing and the equipment. Because those are more doable in the next month and a half, you know, based on. You know, discussions with the school representatives or the teachers, you know, will be tomorrow's, uh, from what I understand. Um, we're already started vaccines, uh, the date for those to be completed is by then. Jeremiah is way down the road on hybrid modeling. And then we know we're going to start getting feedback from parents within this next week, right? I mean, that I would have hoped we had done earlier. So I, I think it's doable and this is, uh, speaking. Employer to employee, you know, uh, with Bob, I think it behooves us to place a timeline. On the next expectation, like, and like Bob's saying. We're not reaching high, you know, we're, we don't necessarily need details to that degree. But we need to know that at this point, we have something that we can present concrete to both the parents, the community. Uh, but also to the teachers, like, let's put it to rest, you know, at this point, like, we, we see that there's a lot of other schools going in. The least we can do is make sure we have a concrete plan.
I, I think though that when you say concrete plan, Eric, that still for me. Includes all the minutia, so, um, we have to be like. This, this resolution, even if you say all the details of the model, that includes all the. The minutia and we're, and we're probably not going. Like how, how do we use language that gets at just the big picture versus. Exactly how kids are sitting on the bus or exactly how they're walking down the hall. Like those aren't the things we need.
I think hybrid, the modeling, so that referring to the hybrid modeling.
Hybrid model.
That'll drive staffing. And then equipment is ancillary. We already know he said ninety-nine percent of the way there, right? And that may change slightly based on the hybrid model, but that should be something that we should be able to. Work out the, you know, logistics of that within a couple of weeks, I would imagine.
So what you're proposing is that instead of saying, could, because this are kind of what I just typed in is actually set up above. Whereas the Gladstone's school district. Will, in a hybrid model based on the ODEs, this is, I can change it right now. Ready. Um, schools, safe learners.
Why don't you just use the acronym, Stacy? RSSL, yeah.
Just take out the link, the words or just put that in.
No, I think, yeah, they got the words, just put RSSL.
I would put, put both things, I don't know that by heart. Yeah, I would, yeah, keep it, please.
Okay, I will.
I'm going to be over and over asking Bob, what is RSSL? Like everything else.
Well, in the, in the hybrid plan itself, and I mean, this was two hours, two and a half hours ago, but didn't Jeremiah in the first PowerPoint. Direct that the hybrid itself was going to be dictated by Bob, the administrators. And I can't remember who else that said on there. It wasn't necessarily a, uh, we can, we can put in there that we direct that to be done. And Eric, maybe I'm hearing you wrong, but my understanding was that the hybrid is actually, uh, put together. Through administration, Bob, Jeremiah and whoever, and somebody, teachers.
Cooperation with our staff.
Thank you. That's what it said.
Yeah, I'm, I, I just feel as a director, I want to have, um, choice made. In the next month and a half. If we need to tweak it, um, because of new guidelines that come out or lack of vaccines, so be it. But I want to be further along than, we might do an AMPM. We might do these people in class, these not, this grade, this not, you, it's a lot of what ifs still. And I think we should be further along in the road than that based on what's taking place. And especially with now that we're starting the vaccine, so you know, that, that we have concrete.
Well, and then what happened, I'm going to play devil's advocate, Eric, because I'm wave three and I'm not even close to, to getting my vaccine yet. Um, they haven't even put out the, the, as of, they haven't even put up the, uh, invitation for wave two yet. If we put in a date. And we're not there. Um, come March nineteenth, due to whatever other, you know, we've already had fire, flood, famine, unemployment, COVID. Um, what if we're not there? And we put it in this resolution.
This is good, what Stacy's putting in there. She's addressing that by putting the word draft in.
We're only asking for the plan, right? And I do think we need a plan by then.
And when, when are you guys saying the plan is developed? If we're, if we're staying in CBL until March nineteenth, we need the plan by March first.
Well, yeah, it's even better. We need a plan, we need a plan, right? I mean, I need the plan, right? Because if there's a possibility to go back after spring break, that, that's a natural point, by the way, where it cha- changes trimesters, right? So there is a very natural point there for us to go back. If there's a possibility. And if people are willing to go down this route, and if there's enough vaccinations to do so, you want that plan before that. You want that plan detailed before that. And at that point, it still doesn't bind us to return after spring break. It just says we have a plan ready to go when the timing's right.
And this could help drive some of the work with the teachers union on the developing an MOU. Um, if we know we need to, we need, we, this is concrete, we, we're being directed, we need to have a plan by this date. That may change some of the tone of, of how we approach this, where we prioritize the. Teachers that are getting the vaccine and the wave one, you know, that, uh, we see how we can start formulating a hypermodel utilizing those folks first. You know, um, that, that, the times are the essence at this point, you know? I know we have a lot of community members that have said, absolutely not, don't do anything until the end of the year. But I know that I personally have gotten an equal amount of people begging to get, for whatever reason. You know, whether it's their child is, uh, experiencing anxiety to the level they're in and, uh, being hospitalized or. Um, that people are losing their homes because they, uh, got to stay home. And they've lost their jobs because they're watching the children all day. Um, whatever the case may be, I think that people, either way, want to know. We're creating a plan that's set in stone and that we're moving forward at a, at a pace that's equal to. The information that's coming out at, at this point. So, um, I don't think this is beyond of an ask.
So, let's have a date, let's have a date here then. We need to put a date in there. We need to motion and second that the amendment. And whether that passes or not, then we still need to go back and vote on the, um, thing itself.
And I will, you know, I mean, and, and parents and community need to know that even though this plan is in place and we've said it before, but being a teacher, I will say it to, and again. Um, you've got the choice. You know, this is because, because a hybrid is opening up does not mean. That you have to put your child, you know, this spring back into, you know, back into school.
And, and that is in the, our SSL guidance, it does direct the school district to provide both. Right. And the plan had, the draft, the plan also has to. Or is directed to be, um, easy to pivot, easy, it easy, right? But it, uh, make it as simple as possible that we are able to go back to CDL if. Uh, an outbreak happens and we are forced to close again. So. Um, it, it, it's, you know, Jared, I know the district is already feeling the weight of that, of how to create a plan that meets all of those needs. But, um, CDL does remain an option. Um, will continue to remain an option for people who choose not. Sorry about the noise in the background. Um, so. As I'm drafting this is directing the superintendent to develop the plan. Do I need to be as explicit to say, because I know it's not just Bob developing it, it is him working with our, our staff. Um. Does that need to be that specific, Bob, that we need to say that? Or is it directing the superintendent, you get to do the work how you are doing the work? Like, we don't, we don't pinhole or you in that, right?
That's correct. You don't want, you don't want to pinhole it down too much.
Right, I don't.
The other thing I, I want to make sure you know is that, um, really, we're looking at two options. That's really what we're looking at. And we, we have a pretty good idea of where that's going to end up. Um, but we've got to work the process more and have more conversation with our staff before I want to present it out as the plan. And, um, uh, the, I think it's just incredibly important. A process is important. It's really important. And I want to make sure that we've processed this correctly and that we've considered all voices. Um, I would expect that we will have something back to you by the February board meeting. That's only two weeks away. I think we'll have something back to you at that time. There will be a pretty solid outline of what that will look like.
Okay, so, uh, my, here's my proposal, the developer hybrid model draft plan by, and then the date of the last day of spring break. Which I can't seem to find my calendar, so whatever that is, um, since we already referenced the end of script, spring break. Um, that includes. The proposed hybrid model, the required staffing needs. And the PPE and cleaning equipment needed to meet the expectations of that hybrid model. So this hybrid one. That includes. Uh, proposed hybrid model. The required staffing needs. And PPP, PPE and cleaning equipment required to meet. The needs of the proposed hybrid model. That's still fairly high level from what I would want, and I think. Yeah.
I'm suggesting March tenth, just because that's a board meeting.
Perfect.
And, and hopefully we'll get it on February tenth.
Is that reasonable though for? I mean, I guess my question would be to Bob, I mean, there, there's a lot of planning that's going to go into a hybrid model, especially when we're talking about half day, A day, B day, half day. Um, that, you know, that, that's a, that's a Bob question.
We're going to have, we're going to plan to have an outline of the hybrid plan that we believe is the most appropriate to you by the February board meeting. That's what, that's what the plan is. That's two week, that's two weeks away. That doesn't mean we'll have every detail of that plan worked out. But it will be able to give you a really good basis for where we're headed. Um, and an understanding of what needs to be done to get there. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm very confident if it can't happen, I'll let you know. But I, I'm confident that it can.
And I guess that was my question earlier is if it can't happen, but it's in this resolution, you know? Is it like Mission Impossible and the tape blows up or like what, you know? How about, how, how binding is this if, if it's not done by March tenth? What happens if it's not?
Um, so what I would tell you, Tracy, is it has to be done by March tenth. I, I don't think that, I, I don't see an option there.
Okay, and then that's why Bob, as long as, as long as.
There, there's steps that we have to go through with how getting a, our blueprint into the county for approval. Um, we have to have everybody on the same page of where we're headed. If we're, if we have a design that is going to open school after spring break, and I hope we do, I hope we do. Um, then there is, there's a lot of detail that has to be, uh, done and out. And that our staff is ready, our building administrators are ready. So it's, I, I'm, I am not concerned about that, quite frankly.
Okay, if you're not concerned, I'm okay. And Stacy, this is going to sound really, Teddy, I'm trying to move your page for you. Uh, could you? Could you make sure that the last sentence is part of, you know, like either make the margins? Do you know what I'm saying? Like make the margins. Um, so, so that, yeah. So that last sentence is, you don't have to go down to the next page for that last sentence. Or if, even if you go to like page, oh, there you go. Thank you.
Okay, so do, are we ready for a vote on the additional language?
Can I change the date? To Fed, our February board meeting then, because March tenth, like Bob said, is too late.
Yeah.
No, no, you don't want to change the date because he's going to form, give us, uh, the initial plan for the hybrid, for, for his option for hybrid March tenth. We want a more formulated plan than he may be able to give us by that February date on March tenth.
That's, that's the goal. That's the goal.
Want this to say not draft, then to just say hybrid plan?
I'm good with that. Yeah. And then I would add, uh, at the bottom where you have through spring break. I would put in parentheses after that, the date of the end of spring break. Let's just formalize, form, make it more formal.
Really with you, except that the date of returning after spring break, there's two teacher workdays, right? On that twenty-ninth and thirtieth, isn't that correct? Already on the calendar.
That's exactly right. Yeah, there's a, a grading day and then a. That's exactly right. Yeah, there's a, a grading day and then a planning day, the day after.
So if we say spring break does technically end, and students would return on the 29th, except those are two workdays.
Right.
That's where it gets a little complicated is. So what date would we put there?
Would that be Wednesday, the 31st? Is that the first day back for kids? Looking at my calendar, it would be Wednesday. Because if the teacher, if the teacher workdays are for report cards, we, that's, that's what, um, through their unions, that's, that's, that's their mark, I mean, you know, the Stacy, that's their marked time for report cards, and we can't ask.
We can also just say, continue with comprehensive distance learning through March 19th.
I, I think that we're gonna need to maybe have a motion on each one of these things. I, I propose that we have a motion for the, the first part that's, that we just added. Which, as I believe this, one, two, three, that starts with be it resolved. Let's, let's take care of that, and then maybe entertain something else.
Yeah, let me make this easier. Why don't you, we just, yeah, why don't we just vote on what's already been first and seconded, which was the first draft of this? And then after that, if it's rejected, we now have a new proposal for the whole document, so it's two votes.
And, and I'm sorry, I, my, my, I could be wrong, but my understanding of parliamentary procedure is now that we've written it in, we've made a change, and we have to accept the change. And then whether we accept it or not, then we vote on it as a larger thing. But before we go to that larger final vote, we can make additional changes. But I feel like we went from a focus of one area, and I think we got through that. And now we're talking about amending another one, which is very doable. There, there are two different things to consider.
But isn't it all one resolution, so we can vote on, we're voting on the whole resolution?
We're, we're voting on accepting changes to it before we then vote on it.
Got it. Okay.
So Grace, Grace, Grace is correct, you have to vote on each change you do, and then at that point, vote on the whole document.
Okay, so this one right here, what we've just, this be it resolved, the Gladstone School Board, District Board directs the superintendent to develop a hybrid plan that includes the proposed hybrid, I added instructional model, just a little more clarity, clarity. Tell me if you want that or not.
I like it.
Required staffing needs, PPE and cleaning equipment needed. I don't know where I put it, and PPE and cleaning equipment needed to meet the needs of the proposed hybrid model by March 10th, 2021.
Can you change equipment required? Cleaning equipment required to, yeah.
And not needed, required.
Yeah, just so many needs in there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Shall the board adopt this statement?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's moved in seconded. Discussion. Natalie, would you please call the vote?
Yes, Jay.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes, sorry. Stick your thumbs.
Stacy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yeah.
And Jeremy? Is Jeremy still here?
He did have a commitment tonight that he needed to leave, actually quite a while ago.
His name's still on there.
Thank you.
All right, the motion passes, and hopefully, perhaps Jeremy, if he does come back, can? Now, do we have, we have something else to consider? Do we want to modify this and add a date? I believe Eric had a proposal to make a change and add a date. I'll take a motion or a second.
Motion to modify to add a date, clarifying the end of spring break.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, so motion and seconded, let's, let's figure out what that date is, and. Move along.
I suggest Wednesday, 31st, if that's the first day back for the kids to school.
Sounds good. All right. Does that? Is that?
No. I think the date should go through spring break, and then maybe even parentheses after that, March 31st, 2021. Because monitoring the county metrics and state, state staff vaccines seems to be a separate sentence, unrelated, kinda?
My concern is spring break doesn't actually go through March 30th. That's why we're like, I'm splitting hairs, but spring break ends, and it's, it's teacher workdays on the 29th and 30th.
Can we replace words, can we replace the word spring break with a date?
I would be March 30th, then, because we would return March 31st, correct?
Yeah, but Stacy, didn't you want to say that, oh, hey, never mind. I thought you wanted to say that Monday back, but I'm okay with the, I'm okay with the 30th.
Well, because they have the workday on the 29th and then 30th. So, and, and the other thing is, you could say March 19th, that, that CDL's through March 19th, because then we have spring break, and we have two teacher workdays. And I think that's a little more clear.
I'm okay with, with whatever.
I'm good with the 19th as well.
Technically, it's through the 19th.
And because you did that, would you need to change and monitor to while monitoring?
All right, are we ready to consider this?
Motion to accept the changes made to the final section.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Natalie, please call the vote.
Thank you, Steve?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yeah.
Jay?
Yes.
And Jeremy, is he still here?
Okay, the motion carries. So we've added the two sections, and now we should consider adoption of the resolution as a whole. I'll read it again if anyone would like that, but if we are ready to just consider this as a whole, I would gladly accept a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I do just want to clear, say, and I think that I understand this correctly, but just so, again, all on the same page. This section right here, where we're saying that the Gladstone School District will slowly implement students' return to school and hybrid model based on the Oregon Department of Ed's RSSL guidance, that means we are following the metrics. That's the assumption I'm taking, so I just want to make sure that that's what's meant to be in there, because the metrics are within the guidance. So we're following the guidance, therefore, we're following the metrics.
That appears what it is saying, yes.
That's the way I read it, too, Stacy.
Great, okay.
I'm gonna say that I'm an advocate for that, based on the liability issue. We have to follow the metrics, or we, as the board of directors, place this school district at a potential grave harm, you know? So I don't see that we have a choice in that, that's my assertion.
All right, thank you. If that's the end of discussion, Natalie, would you call the vote, please?
Yes, Stacy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yeah.
Jay?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And just one more try for Jeremy. Thank you.
Motion carries. We have one more item on the action item agenda. Bob. After some discussion, we've decided to table consideration of the OSAA athletics and activities until at least February. Can you give us kind of a rundown of your timeline to help the, the board and the public understand why we're doing that?
Yeah, the OSAA, that's the Oregon School Activities Association, so that's who oversees school activities such as athletics. We'll be coming out with some new guidance on February 8th, and it, it would be pointless for us to really consider it until we look at the new guidance. In addition, there is the possibility that some activities that are non-contact could be with the, the school district, we could have our kids participating in those activities. And I don't know where the school districts are that are our league, and whether they're even considering that as an option. And so I reached out to the superintendent today, and we're gonna organize a meeting of our league superintendents, and just get a sense of where people, what people are thinking, and, and what that might look like.
Thank you.
So I, what, what I thought we might be ready to have a discussion on this tonight, we are not, because there's still some other things we need to do.
All right. So by tabling that item until February, that concludes our action items. We have already done public participation. I, we are not going into executive session, and so you know, it's not on here, and I, I think it's been a long day. I don't know, would any board members like to make a comment? Board comments?
Hey, just real quick, will we be posting this session?
I, I don't have an answer.
Okay, so I would ask that Natalie or Bob, you know, maybe we can get this out there for those that couldn't join at this time. And then the resolution as well, I'm assuming we'll have a communication about that. The outcome.
I would, I would sure think so, yeah.
I just want to thank all the parents and staff and community who, who came today, the, we're 51 still. So those of you who are left, thank you for sitting through this. And I want to thank every community member who has emailed either through Greg, who sent them through us, or emailed us all separately. I actually really appreciate the emails and the thoughts, and I do write you all back, and I do take notes. I have 10,000 spirals on my desk. But it, it means a lot, and your voice means a lot, so, so thank you. And anytime you feel like you need to reach out, or just, we can't always answer questions, but we can definitely listen. So thank you for those who are, who are doing that. I have my own child in school, and my own students in my school. And, you know, we're all very dedicated to your kids.
I guess I would just like to echo what Tracy said, and in addition, my mind is still going back to the last meeting when, at, at least a handful of people, and maybe more, were not able to participate, and I want to apologize on behalf of the board. I think, I don't know about you all, I'm, I'm tired of hearing about, oh, it's COVID, and so everything is out the window. This board does have high standards. We're adjusting like mad as we go. And, and we're gonna continue to try to improve, so thank you again for the, the input and the things that you've done to help. It is appreciated. Anyone else? If there are no further comments, then this meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, all.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.